Good morning. We're here for our weekly board session. It's Wednesday, March 20, 2019. We're in the Senator hearing room. And as always, if you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we opened up this morning with a little bit of laughter because I think Brenda, who is our secretary, was -- my birthday's on April 1st, right? Which is an April Fools' joke in itself. But, you know, if you switch people's mice's up? We had -- I thought I had a dead mouse in here. When I say mouse, it's this thing. But she did this. She switched mine with John's. So John couldn't figure out why his mouse was running all over the place. His -- anyways, long story short, that's what we were laughing about. Was our mice got mixed up. So, welcome. Public comment. The chair's probably mixed up. That's what you're saying, John, I'm sure.
No, no, I never said that.
We're under public comment. We have Gene Pfeifer's here to have a public comment. Gene, if you'd like to join us over there on the side?
Here.
Yes, please. Good morning.
Morning.
Hey, good morning, Gene.
Morning.
Morning, Sam.
Good morning.
So several weeks -- the topic is the Third Bridge. Several weeks ago, communication was sent out by Tom Hoffert, the new manager of the Salem Chamber. I'm a member of the Salem Chamber.
Gene, for the record, could you introduce yourself, please?
No, excuse me. Gene Pfeifer, and I reside at 1392 South Water Street, Silverton, Oregon.
Thank you.
I'm a design-build specialist. So, anyway, back to Tom Hoffert sent out a communication requesting participation in the city council meeting with Salem where the decision was going to be made if they would continue with the Third Bridge, working with the studies that already had been expended. Nine or $10 million has been expended on this. So I took an interest in it, and I wrote a document, sent it to Jim Lewis, and copied to everyone else about the -- I felt that the council needed to keep moving on it, but I also felt that they should be focused on fixing the current conditions with the congestion, making some ramps, and fixing the current bridges, this kind of thing. So, at this time, the -- I'm now pursuing that and meeting with different groups as to, I feel, what I have presented to Jim Lewis originally is a solution. And the focus that I'm making on it is interstate commerce. The design that we received from the city, there was a meeting about a month or a month and a half ago or something, and that is in the package that was just been submitted. It shows that the bridge does not continue right off the end of the north parkway. It jogs down and gets involved in city streets, creating more congestion to the north besides the congestion that we currently have on the Marion Street and Center Street Bridges and on Wallace Road. So to continue it straight, a bridge could go in that's about 1,300 feet long, and that's in deference to the design that was presented that Peter Fernandez had at that time, which is also attached to the packet, which shows a bridge that's 3,600 feet long, and that's actually longer than the steel bridge on I-5 crossing the Columbia in Portland. That is 3,500 feet long. So we have this tremendous span, which is costing more money than we should be expending. So if we can do that, and then on the other end, the plan shows that it continues onto Highway 22. But what is missing is the traffic that going across from east to west on the Marion Street Bridge goes down, as it has continued to, to the south end of Wallace Road where it's congested. The plan that Peter submitted said, "Let's add three new lanes to Wallace Road," whereas we still have stoplights all along that, so we're just going to make a huge parking lot, and we're still going to back up traffic all the way to the Capitol Building or worse. So, besides that, I show some improvements. It would be the rampings and other things that would be involved. So the first thing I'm proposing is that it would be federal-funded, that we go right to the federal government on it. We get their consensus that it is appropriate for interstate commerce and emergency, that we don't have something, as it continues with the bullneck that we have, that traffic from the freeway comes and stops in the middle of Salem. It's ridiculous. So if we do that, and we have the state or the federal improvements also put in what is called Marine Drive, we will also -- we will be able to build on that by putting ramps from Marion Street Bridge, et cetera, to make it all work. So this is what I think we should be focused on, so I'm asking the commissioners to take a look at it. And I would speak to probably Sam. The reason I came this morning is last weekend or so, there was announcement in the paper that the commissioners would be potentially getting this forward on their own. I think that's a good move and a good thought, but I think that we need to do something that will work better. I have studied personally, driving across from the Shamalow intersection, or going back, going up to Brooks to have it, going across the Willamette. Those certainly work, but the problem with it, the traffic or the public out of habit would turn and go south on Wallace Road, and we'd run into the same congestion that we now deal with. We need to get rid of that congestion problem. So, anyway, this is -- I'm working on it, a meeting with different people. I'd like to have you commissioners take a look at it, and basically, if there's any questions at this time, I will take them.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Appreciate it. All right.
Take a look at it.
And I gave a copy to the secretary for the record, so she has my copy. All right. So consent calendar this morning. Commissioner Willis, I believe it's your turn.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the consent calendar. Under consent, and we have under finance, approve a quitclaim deed to convey real property tax ID number R-86204 located at 925 Howard Street Southeast in Salem, Oregon. Under Health and Human Services, approve an order appointing Susan Garlinger to the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Committee with a term ending December 31, 2022. Under Information Technology, approve amendment number four to purchase order number 870498, adding $183,000 for temporary staffing services from Covendis Technologies for a revised purchase order value of $414,520. Under Public Works, approve an order appointing Brenda Sanchez and Rebecca McComb to the Marion County Water Quality Advisory Committee with terms ending February 28, 2023. Approve an order reappointing Richard Massey to the Marion Water Quality Advisory Committee with a term ending February 28, 2023. Approve an order canceling a public hearing previously scheduled for March 27, 2019 for mass gathering 19-001/Real Promotions. And receive hearing officer's decision denying administrative review case 18-023-Arnold.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Just want to note that Susan, Susan, you're here, correct? Welcome. And maybe when we actually do the proclamation, we could have you come up and introduce yourself and make some comments. At that time, we have you under the consent calendar for your approval, if that's okay? Okay, great. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Great. And our first item under action is a proclamation to consider approval of a proclamation designing the month of March as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Marion County. So if our presenters would like to come over to the side, unless you have a -- you have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
And we'll just do it right from the --
If it's okay, Susan and I come here, and then our guests over there.
Sure, that'll work. Right. You can do your presentation there.
Okay.
Okay, and then for the record, if you want to just introduce everybody and --
Sure. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Corissa Newfelt. I'm the program manager for the Marion County Intellectual and Developmental Disability Program. And with me this morning, we have Susan Garlinger, who you just referenced, was appointed to our Intellectual and Developmental Disability Advisory Committee. And then over at the other table, we have Shelley and Jess Day. And they will be speaking a little bit during the presentation as well.
Welcome.
Thank you. So this morning, I wanted to come before you. I understand you have a proclamation you are considering to declare March as Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Month. So it's always an opportunity for us to be able to share with you, as well as our community at large, about the importance of the citizens within our community who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families. So just a little bit of a history recap. In 1987, President Ronald Reagan declared March as Developmental Disability Awareness Month. And thank you to the board, because the last several years, you have also proclaimed March as Developmental Disability Awareness Month. Again, this is an opportunity for us to be able to share with our community, to promote respect and information awareness about the people within our community and the experiences that they have here. This year, we decided that we wanted to have a theme for the Awareness Month, so our theme is "A World of Choice and Possibility." We believe that this is something that we want all of our citizens to have, but particularly important for individuals who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities. And so just a few factoids I wanted to share is Oregon is the first state in the country to close its institutions for individuals with ADD and support people. They made the decisive choice to support people in their home and community, which I believe is progressive. There's unfortunately still states across our country who still have institutions. Here in Marion County alone, we have about 2,000 children and adults who receive services from Developmental Disability Program in Marion County. Also Oregon, and you've heard me speak about this before, I believe, but Oregon is the first state, or amongst one of the first states, to have adopted an employment-first policy, which essentially says that individuals have the right to choice and access to work in the community. We have in Oregon adopted this into state law, which many states have an employment-first policy, but very few actually have adopted it into their state law. So that's, I think, impressive. And then here in Marion County, we have approximately 100 adult foster homes, 35 children's foster homes, and approximately 150 24-hour residential programs that are specifically licensed and certified to support children and adults in our community to have a world of choice and possibility. So these are different activities that Oregon and the county itself has taken to be able to support the citizens within our county to have choice and possibility. So I'm going to turn it over to Shelley and Jess to talk about how Jess experiences his community.
Welcome.
Good morning. How are you guys doing this morning?
We're doing really good. It's great to have you with us. Good morning, Jess.
So Jess is nonverbal, and so I'm going to speak about the pictures he chose with me this morning. And so when Jess was born, we experienced a little kind of glitch in what we had planned, let's say, and Jess became sick and now has cerebral palsy. That wasn't what we, you know, Ross and I had thought, you know, how our life was going to go, and so we were a little concerned about Jess accessing his future as we had mapped out in our perfect world. But little did we know that even though our future wasn't as we planned, we were going to have a much brighter future in a different way. And so we were blessed with Jess. And as you can see, Jess has had quite an amazing experience through his life. Up in the left-hand corner, Jess is a huge Beaver fan. His favorite color's orange. We've brainwashed him well.
We spotted that.
Yeah. His wheelchair's orange even, too. So, anyway, Jess accesses his community every day. He, you know, we thought that life would be different, and then we had our other two children, which you can see Jess's brother and sister there, and we realized it really is just different. It's not -- every child is different. Every child with a disability is different. And through Marion County D.D., Jess has been able to access that world, and that's why I included Jess and I chose these two bottom pictures here. Jess in the snow here with -- who's that on the left right there? There's Dryden at the, sorry, the country dance here, and then who's the other one, Jess? Michael, right here on the left. Those are Jess's caregivers. And we're able to provide him those because of Marion County. And Jess is able to get out and be the adult young man that he is because of his caregivers. He's able to access his community. He's able to go -- he goes every morning to Grant Elementary School through the CTP at Salem Kaiser, and he works there in the mornings. And then in the afternoons, he goes to different other jobs at Willamette University. He goes to a fish store and helps out. He enjoys the things that he does. And so Jess has a bright future. He's able to access and enjoy the social things that he loves as well, because Jess is incredibly social. I don't know if you've seen him signing to everybody over here. He actually has a great sense of humor, but he's really kind of shy right now, believe it or not. Normally, he's the life of the party. He loves music and that type of thing. So, anyway.
Takes after his dad.
Yeah, he really does, actually, with a sense of humor. Yeah, Ross is good at that. But what I wanted to say is, we all have -- we all have an expectation in life of our children, and sometimes things come along unplanned. Actually, most of the time, things come along that are unplanned, and we just redirect and adjust, and then we have a miracle that we didn't expect happen. And the bright -- Jess is a little embarrassed. He does not like it when we talk about him. But anyway, then we have the bright things that happen that are unexpected, and we just say, "Thank you, God." And because of D.D.'s services, we're able to have the normal, typical, wonderful experiences that Jess has every single day. He's actually in a hurry to get out the door, so he can go do that now. So I just want to thank you guys for providing that for him. Thank you.
I don't really, I don't know what to say, but thanks for coming in. I share some of your experience and know what it means and know the services. Is that on? It doesn't sound right. I can't tell.
Yeah, we can hear you.
But I've shared those services with a granddaughter and know that's kind of life and death almost, to be able to get out, to be covered. Other kids get sick and have some fallback. It's -- the service has been wonderfully helpful. So I'm glad your experience is good.
That's a great quality.
I just want to say thank you for being here. You, thank you. You made my day. You made my day. You're welcome to come here anytime. You know, sometimes it's not as happy around here, so.
He does bring a smile every day.
Yeah, it's great. Because I'm new, I don't want to keep you too long, but could you tell me a little bit? You said Marion County helps make all this possible. What does the county do for you?
So the caregivers are actually paid to come and be with Jess.
From Marion County?
Through Marion County. So Dryden is a caregiver in the sense that he's medically trained through the Army, and he's a EMT. So Jess has epilepsy and other medical needs, and Dryden is completely trained that way. So we can sleep at night and function during the day. And like yesterday, they were afraid at school, he had a seizure, and Dryden was able to go pick him up, evaluate that, and we were okay with, I didn't have to worry. He was able to go home with Dryden. Dryden knew how to take care of him, and the day went on with the other two kids. I was actually volunteering. And then Michael has a brother himself who has a disability, and so Michael is more like a best friend to Jess, because he is able to interact with Jess just on a brotherly level. And so he takes him to the gym over in West Salem where he works, and when he's working out, he takes Jess, and he works out with Jess. And so Jess just has the regular peer involvement with Michael, which is really neat, too. So that gives a quality of life, too, to then our other children who can go and be, you know, a peer to someone else.
That's great. Thank you.
So Jess, thank you for being here today, and I know you're anxious to get moving and get to work, and thank you for making our day. And I just want to say this. I know your dad's sitting out here, and he's a little shy, too, but he's a funny guy.
He's pretty funny, though.
That you are blessed with a wonderful family. And Shelley and Ross, thank you for all you've done, not only in your family, to lead by example in our community. We just are so thankful to have you here today and to share your wonderful life with us. Thank you so much for being here. Jess, thanks.
All right.
That's good.
And you know what? You know what? That's exactly me. That's exactly me. And you know what? I want to go to work with you. This is a boring job sitting up here right now. All right.
So I, too, want to thank Jess and Shelley for coming, and Jess is really one of the approximately 2,100 children and adults that we serve through Marion County. I also want to just acknowledge that we have three other case management entities in Marion County through support services brokerages that also provide similar services and opportunities for the adults here in Marion County. So I'd like to give Susan an opportunity as well to share a little bit about her experience and why she might have joined the I.D.D. Advisory Committee.
Thanks, Corissa. Susan, welcome.
Thank you.
If you want to just introduce yourself for the record, and then we'll go from there.
My name is Susan Garlinger, and my husband and I have lived here in Marion County close to 20 years. And we had a neurotypical daughter, and 16 and a half months later, had identical twin boys who were not neurotypical, and we were thrust into a world that we were not prepared for. And so we are on a journey now, and our boys are now 11 years old, and both are still pre-verbal. One also has epilepsy. Neither of them are fully potty-trained, and so we are realizing that we are on a lifetime journey. We originally thought we had a few hurdles to get over, but we now better understand our calling, and so we believe part of our calling is to lean into our community and not just take care of ourselves, but hopefully make a way that it's better for those who come along just a couple steps behind us. So I'm really honored to be on this team now. We, like I said, we've been in the community almost 20 years. I've been on staff at Salem Alliance Church most of those years, and my husband works for UPS, and so this is our home, and we just are grateful for the opportunity to work with others to keep making it better.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your passion and your willingness to look outward, to serve others in your situation. It's a real blessing to our community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here.
I guess my only, and I can, with personal experience, so you need to make us aware. Something you said of when the community lets you down, and let us know what we can do to help if something comes up. I don't know if that makes sense, but I know what I'm getting at. I wish you did. If we can help, tell us. That's how simple it is.
I see. Thank you. It is truly a privilege, and my husband would have joined also, but generally, we can't be in the same place at the same time. So he's fully on board as well.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for your service at Salem Alliance as well.
So we are grateful to have Susan on our advisory committee and are looking forward to having her bring her ideas and perspective to the table. And as you know, the I.D.D. Advisory Committee's primary role is to advise our program about identifying those resources and services that are needed within our community so that we can best meet the needs of families and the individuals we're serving. So just to close out, I want to provide a challenge to our community. As you've heard today, Jess is an example of when people reach out and get involved, that, you know, despite one's disability, you can have fulfilling and quality life. So unfortunately, many of the individuals that we serve, as well as their families, do experience a lot of social isolation and don't have the family or the community support that they need to be able to have that world of choice and possibility. So we want to challenge everybody to think about how they can participate, how they can help their neighbors, their fellow citizens in the county have that. That could be just having a conversation at home with your kids around the dinner table about how we respect every person regardless of disability, and every person has the ability to contribute to his or her community. It just may not be as typical as some. We would ask that you invite your neighbor, a family who has a child who experiences a disability, to dinner, to church, shopping, whatnot, or an individual who experiences that. We have many adults in our community who live independently, but again, are socially isolated. Consider hiring. If you're in a position where you can hire somebody who experiences a disability, try to meet that challenge in the Oregon statute. Hire somebody or support a local business. We have many businesses here in our community who do employ individuals with significant disabilities, and specifically individuals who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities. So put your money in your business towards those businesses. If you have the ability to advocate for policy practices and laws that will help make places in our community accessible for all people with disabilities, that would be wonderful. And consider applying for the I.D.D. Advisory Committee. We still have vacancies and would love to have participation from our community to be able to move resources and services forward that would help support choice and possibility for our citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, Corissa. I think that's into your presentation, right?
Yes.
So Commissioner, if you want to make a motion, and then we will read the --
I'd be happy to. So I would move that we do approve a proclamation that designates month of March as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Marion County.
I second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we'll read the proclamation. So would you like to start?
I would.
And then you can go next.
In the -- In the matter of proclaiming the month of March 2019 as Intellectual and Development Disability Awareness Month in Marion County, a proclamation, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting on March 20, 2019. Whereas no fewer than 2,800 residents of Marion County live with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and whereas Marion County is committed to encouraging, supporting, and developing service options that assure individuals who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities are provided the opportunities to live fulfilling and meaningful lives, and...
Whereas Marion County strives to support choices of individuals who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities in their families by promoting and providing services that are person-centered, person-directed, flexible, and community-inclusive. And whereas Marion County acknowledges and values the unique gifts, talents, and abilities of each individual who experiences intellectual and developmental disabilities. And whereas Marion County believes individuals who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities should have the opportunities to live, work, and actively participate in their community, and...
Whereas Marion County seeks to advance social and policy change so that individuals who experience intellectual and developmental disabilities, their families and their communities may live in a world of choice and possibility. Now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the month of March 2019 is Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Marion County, dated at Salem, Oregon, this 20th day of March, 2019.
Thank you.
So, Chris, can Commissioners be on that committee?
Yes, absolutely.
Would you get me an application, then? Maybe I can really help.
Okay.
And we have a signed proclamation here. One copies. Give that back to her. I would like to accept this. Chris, do you want to accept this? I'll come down there.
Tammy wants a picture, Kevin.
Picture? Should we go over it behind you?
It's all true.
We're all going, huh?
I guess. Now that you're back, Kevin, I have to tell you something. They tried to teach me sign language early after. I wasn't very good at it, but I got what he was telling you.
What was he telling? What was he telling? What did Jess tell me?
Same thing that we tell you every day.
He knows I have thick skin, doesn't he? Probably his dad warned him. Tell the Commissioner what you really think about him, just like you guys do. Wow. Really made our day. Thank you. Okay, our next item is under Business Services. Consider approval of an order delegating authority to the Chief Administrative Officer to make determinations regarding appropriateness of green energy technology for public building construction. And I see Bruce Armstrong on here, and Colleen, but it looks like we don't need two people to help John get delegated this authority, I guess.
Well, that could be under, we can consider discussing that. For the record, Mr. Chair, Commissioners Bruce Armstrong, Senior Assistant Legal Counsel, Colleen Kunschafens couldn't be here today. She was scheduled. And she's deeply involved in this subject. Under Oregon statute, public bodies required, if they're engaging in a construction project for a public building or a major renovation, to go through a process of considering the appropriateness of utilizing green energy technology, which is generally, when you break it down, primarily solar energy in a project. So, a public body is obligated to go through a process of determining if it's appropriate, communicating that determination to the Department of Energy. And the Department of Energy will generally advise of their opinion. If a public body determines it's not appropriate, will give its own advice. But then ultimately, it is up to the public body to make the final determination. What we are, the county goes through periodic periods where we have more construction projects than others. But the goal is to have a more streamlined process and an efficient process so that you don't, at every stage of this determination, communication, reporting, and final decision, that it doesn't have to come before the Board of Commissioners. So, what is proposed is, and in discussions with Colleen Kunschafens, who's the Business Services Director and oversees the facilities program. What's proposed is that the CAO, Chief Administrative Officer, John Latimer, that the Board delegate authority to Mr. Latimer to make these decisions in close consultation with Colleen Kunschafens, and keeping the Board apprised and updated as the process goes on. But to allow for a more streamlined or efficient process for this decision-making, these determinations, and the reporting to the Department of Energy. Again, ultimately, it is the county's final, it's the county's option to make the final determination of whether green energy is appropriate for a project. And if, and taking a step back, if it is deemed appropriate, the expectation is that 1.5% of the project total, or the contract price, would be expended on this type of technology. Again, most often solar, but there are other opportunities. But if it's not deemed appropriate, then it is not required or mandatory that a county, a local body, include 1.5% in the project. So, that is the proposal. I'd be happy to answer questions, but what you have before you is an order delegating to John Latimer, or the CAO, to the authority to make these decisions, these determinations, communicate them to the Department of Energy, and make final decisions. So, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bruce. I do have one right off the top. And obviously, John's experience and the trust level that we have in John Latimer is pretty high. I'm looking here, maybe, John, you could talk about the process that if you were to be replaced, not that we're doing that, but...
Remains to be seen.
But I don't see a trigger here that would reverse this if we had a new Chief Administrative Officer. And maybe you can talk about the process that, I'm sure these are recommendations that are going to be made to you by Business Services, and you'll have discussions before you make those decisions. But if we had somebody else in your position, do we, we may want to reverse this. Until, I'm just thinking that out loud. Your thoughts?
Oh, Mr. Chair, one of the problems with putting solar energy usually has to go on roofs, and it's very expensive to do that because you have to, you have to go through the roof to attach these, and then the roof leaks, and it becomes very problematic. And it's very expensive to do. We do a lot of energy, we have a lot of energy applications, efficiency applications in lighting and windows and insulation. So, it's not that we don't look at energy when we build or reconstruct our buildings. And we did that here in this building. I would never make this decision without taking it to the Board anyway and letting you know what the issues are. And I don't think any future CAO would do that either. I don't know why, frankly, that we can't take these to the Board anyway, particularly at Management Update or some other forum, because I would do that. And I can't imagine not getting the Board's views on any of this, so...
So, maybe this is for legal counsel. So, if, my question is, is because if you read it, it says you have the authority to make the decision. You don't have to bring it to the Board. So, and I'm okay with that today because we've been going through these projects, and we've had discussions, and you're pretty open about that.
We're pretty well done with projects.
Right. So, the fact remains that in the future, if we had a situation, we could reverse this order. Correct?
Absolutely. Or we could add language if the Board desired.
I think, I mean, this order is specific to the office rather than to the person. You could amend this order today. You could adopt it specific to John Latimer. And that way, it wouldn't carry forward to the new CAO.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
And you could also put in language that he would do it with consultation with the Board so that if a new order is adopted later, we can make sure that that language is included.
Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I actually support this because we're so busy.
Right.
We aren't as close to these projects as John is.
Right.
And I know that John cares quite a bit about the environment, and that's a priority for him. And so, I think, you know, on a case-by-case determination of what's appropriate for a given project, I just feel like the person who's closest to it should have the authority to make that decision, especially since it's somebody that we trust. So, I think it's a great idea to amend it, to make it specific to John. But I actually really support this proposal, and I think it'd be a good thing for the county.
Mr. Chair, if, we can make that change. And I think the idea of, there's a distinction, our general practice, or your general practice, has been you don't take action items at Management Update. So, I think this would allow updating and consultation with the Board at Management Update. Whereas, but the general practice is you don't take action items. And if, so that was the idea behind this, that you could still receive the consultation.
I'm totally good with this, right, and John doing it. I just, I have this thing in my head, we may have somebody someday that has renewable energy such a high priority, they don't care how much it costs, right? And today, that's not the issue.
Or the other way.
Right, right. So, if we want to, just can we amend this just as we approve it here, that it would be subject, it would actually replace Chief Administrative Officer, or in parentheses, as long as John Latimer is...
I'll even have to say it's further ordered that John Latimer, Marion County Chief Administrative Officer, has granted the authority.
Yes, I will do that.
That's the last line?
Yes. And let's see, you might want to put his name up further. Whereas John, anytime you see Chief Administrative Officer, you just put John's name in front of it.
Do we need to read that? Do we need to read that, or can we just say, can we put it in the?
I think you can put it in your motion.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we're ready for motion, then.
And I support it, so if you can.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve an order delegating authority to John Latimer, Chief Administrative Officer, to make determinations regarding appropriateness of green energy technology for public building construction.
Second.
All right, motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Huge responsibility on your shoulders, John.
We'll second-guess you forever.
Yeah, we're not building any more buildings, so don't worry about it.
All right. Next item, Community Services. Consider adopting a resolution to participate in the 2019-21 Community Dispute Resolution Program, known as CDRP, Grant Selection Process. Tamra, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tamra Gedge, Director for Community Services. The item before you today is a request to allow Marion County to participate in the selection process of the mediation that mediation-selected provider for Marion County. We were approached by the University of Oregon on behalf of its Oregon School of Law to participate, to decide whether or not we wanted to participate in this selection process. Marion County has participated in this process for quite a few years. In the past years, the typical applicant and selection has been through neighbor-to-neighbor. That service has been in place in Marion County and is very active. I spoke with the Executive Director earlier this week, and she indicated that at any one time, Marion County has anywhere from 50 to 60 open cases that they handle in Marion County. And they typically, you know, so you could say that within a month time, they're actively pursuing that number of cases each throughout the year. We are hoping that the legislature will reauthorize the funds that would be necessary for this contract and RFP to be continued. If that happens, then $92,000, a little over $92,000, would be made available for this contract. What Marion County would do is, we would then work with OSU, excuse me, University of Oregon, and through putting out a solicitation process for people to respond to. We would then participate in the selection process. However, the contract, once a vendor is selected, the contract would be held at the University of Oregon. All the money would be ran through the University of Oregon on Marion County's behalf, and the selected provider would need to reside in this local area to serve the needs of Marion County through mitigation services. We have before you today a resolution basically authorizing Marion County to participate in this process. And once that occurs, then the solicitation and the selection and contract process would follow. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I do. Tamra, so can you give us an example of a mediation case that you said there's 50, approximately 50 open? Is it, somebody doesn't like where their fence is with the neighbor, et cetera?
That's a great example. It could be something of that nature, since the dog shelter is under our department. Those types of disputes, disagreements is another way that those services could be utilized and accessed. Simple contact with neighbor-to-neighbor currently, who is our provider, contacting them and saying, I've got a neighbor who has an actively barking dog. We'd like to find a solution, rather than going through a more formal legal process. And really, it really does value that if people are able to actively and effectively communicate, better solutions, more long-lasting solutions can be secured.
Okay. And this obviously keeps people out of our court system that clogs it up. And then the other question, when I read the letter that's addressed to you and the Commissioners, it basically said, the fund, it's the first paragraph, "The funding for these grants is currently derived from an appropriation from the General Fund for purposes of providing dispute resolution services." That would be the State General Fund?
Correct.
Okay. So, if the legislature, because we understand that they do everything right over there all the time, if the legislature does not fund this, do us approving it today, does it go away?
No.
So, we have to pay for it?
We would not have to, we would not go into a contract. So, in any RFP process, we have an out clause that if the funding is no longer available, that would be part of that selection process.
Yeah, I was looking for that, and I didn't see it. But if it's there, I'll take your word for it. Okay.
I actually do have one thing, and I just bring it up. So, I haven't heard anything from them for a long time. Just last night, I get an email, perhaps you did too, saying, you know, we provide these services. I would like to have a little more contact and know that they're doing mid-year or something, just so we know that it truly does do something other than just collect funds.
Sure. We'll be happy to do that. I know that they've had a transition of leadership, neighbor-to-neighbor. If they're selected again, we'll work with them to ensure that a contract has some language of doing an annual presentation. an annual presentation to the board.
At least highlight their successes if there are. We should know that.
I think that's a wise request.
Okay, good. So, we don't have a motion yet, right?
All right, I would, if I could then, make a motion that we adopt a resolution to participate in the 2019-21 Community Dispute Resolution Program Grant Selection Process.
I second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Tamara, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so it is 10 minutes to 10. We had a public hearing scheduled for 9:30, so open a public hearing to consider the City of Jervis Urban Growth Boundary Amendment. Brandon, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. This matter comes before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at the request of a property owner for concurrence in an adoption of an amendment to the Jervis Urban Growth Boundary. The city held a public hearing on the amendment on, in July last year and approved an ordinance amending the city's UGB. The proposal to add 0.53 acres to the UGB meets a portion of identified need for housing for the city for the year 2038. Once the property is annexed, two or three dwellings could be developed on the land. In proposing to expand the urban growth boundary, the applicant addressed, and the city considered applicable requirements. The city determined in adopting its ordinance that the proposal satisfies the requirements of all applicable laws, plans, and codes, and also the Marion County Conference of Urban Growth Policies. Staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners concur in the 0.53 acre amendment to the City of Jervis General Plan Urban Growth Boundary for residential land, and redesignate the land added to the city to a City of Jervis General Plan designation of residential, and rezone the property to a Marion County Urban Zone designation of UT 20, Urban Transition 20 Acre. So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions?
No, we've seen this before. It just, it looks like it should be-
It does.
...within the urban growth boundaries, so it seems like a pretty obvious decision.
And we have copies of Mr. Arnold's request. We do have one person signed up in support of the public hearing. So if there's no further questions for Brandon at this point in time, I'll ask John Brosey to come up. Welcome. Just for the record, if you'll introduce yourself.
Thank you, Members of the Board. My name is John Brosey. I'm representing the property owner. Don't really have a whole lot to say since we support the staff's recommendation and proposed findings. Look forward to completing this long process and maybe finally building two or three homes at the end of Alder Street in Jervis. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have to say, though, that the process is long, partly because it's not designed for individual property owners to make application. Typically, when you're doing an urban growth boundary amendment, it's done on, you know, on behalf of a city. It's a larger, numerous number of properties, so it's intentionally, you know, a slow process and deliberative process, even though this is quite judicial instead of legislative. But it was, as you can see from the maps, it looked like, really kind of a mistake. There was a little notch at the end of this block. That, that is part of a subdivision plat that dates back to way before 1890 in, in Jervis. It's been there for a long time. There was an assumption that was wrong on the part of the property owner that was already actually in the city. Big confusion over that. There's no whoops clause in the state law about mapping mistakes and that sort of thing. So we went through the process. I also want to say that the property owner took some time off, partly to raise some more money to finish the process. So we, we were active through July of the summer, and then, and then we re-initiated this in November. So that's why we're, we're still at this. So I, I can't, I can't complain for all of that time. But sometime in May, assuming this ordinance is adopted, take effect after the 21-day period runs, and then the next day, the, it's scheduled to go back to the City of Jervis, which had a hearing two weeks ago, for, to do the tentative to this, or based on, or assuming this was going to happen, for, to do the annexation and the zoning part of it. So, long, long story short, by May 3rd, approximately, we'll be done. And then we can go into the, or the meat and potatoes part of doing the partition and, and doing the utility and the street work. So, appreciate the process so far. Be happy to answer any questions.
John, I do have a question for you. So, can you, can you go back and tell us exactly when the property owner realized he was not there and when you started, when, when they started this process?
He probably realized it sometime in the end of last year.
So-
He's, he has, he owns one house there, and then he had some additional land that he acquired separately at about the same time. And it was just one of those things he assumed it hadn't looked into.
The end of last year being 2017?
Yes.
So like around December of 2017, and here we are in March of 2019. So his first, his, and this, and Commissioner, I really want to know about this because, and, and some of it's personal information. You don't have to tell us. But I'm curious to how long he started the application process to fix this problem that he had, and how much money he has spent to get to this time. And I, and I know you maybe not be able to tell me that, but this is, go ahead and answer my questions, then I'm going to make a comment.
Well, we, we made our first application in March of 2018. I talked to James before that, and we looked into other ways of, of doing this, but it turned out, of course, there weren't any other ways. So we started in March of 2018. There was, the biggest problem through the process, frankly, was the State of Oregon and the Department of Land Conservation-
Could you say that louder, please, so they could hear down the street?
Yes. I think they've heard my voice before, but it never hurts to get it again. Anyway, but then we, we got over that hump and, and we were, and we've always had excellent service, we think, from the Board of, I mean, from your county staff, and also from the City of Jervis, and the City of Jervis' Council of Government person that does, persons that do their, their planning and administrative things on contract to the City of Jervis. So, but after we got over that hump, then we, the hearing was, was, we had two hearings, and that was, and then the last one was in July of 2018, early July. And if the, if the, if the owner wanted to continue, then we could have rolled right in and been done probably sometime in the fall, late fall perhaps. But the owner took some time out, and then he called me again in November, and we finished it. We're finishing it. As far as the approximate cost, I can only give you approximate because I don't have the numbers in front of me. But about half of the, it's about $25,000 in that range. But remember, we haven't turned any dirt yet, and we haven't applied for a partition, and there are other fees involved. And about half of that is, is, is the, the cost of all the different applications. Some of it will be refunded. Some of the, the stuff that's, the concurrency process that you have here today will be refunded because most of the work has already been done, and we appreciate that a lot. And my client asked me about, when was that going to happen? Because it's a, you know, it's, it's, you know, significant money, particularly for an individual like this who's not in the business and has other business, and just wanted to get this done as a, as a relatively small investment for him. He's a small business owner, independent business owner that lives out in, in Marion County, but not in Jervis now. And so, that's, it gives you a general idea. We're not, it's, like I said, it is, the process is intentionally long, and, but it, some of that was us taking a little bit of break and then go back into it.
And then his long-term plan is to, is to get it zoned so that he could put three more homes on 0.53 acres? But, so, so you got-
The minimum lot size in Jervis is 6,600 square feet. We have a few different options there. And the owner hasn't decided whether he wants to sell the property and let somebody else do the division and development, or whether he wants to do the division, then sell it. These are all things we're considering. We're, we're talking to the city's consulting engineer about the, what specific costs we're going to incur for a short extension of utilities at the end of Alder Street. Fortunately, all the utilities are there, as you saw in the, in this, in your staff report. So they will be relatively minor, but they're still for, you know, for an individual like this, something to consider, just whether or not he wants, how much, how far he wants to stay in the, in this before selling it. And also keeping as much of the value as his, rather than, you know-
Sure.
-leaving something on the table.
So just regardless of what he ends up doing, you've got $10,000 additional per lot expense just to get these things built and developed, minimum. All right, that's what I kind of was looking for.
Yeah, fortunately, yeah. And that's fair, I think.
Plus time, yeah.
It's, 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 it is an unusual case because of this, you know, this, this odd little notch, knit notch at the end of the, of the road. Fortunately, it's an unusual case. I don't get these type of things very often that come through my office, anyway. But it's, it's, it's one of those things.
Yeah.
I don't, don't have any other comments, other than, we're glad we're almost done.
Any other questions?
Well, just Brandon, if, if there were a way on a case like this, where you had an individual property owner who wanted to be incorporated into the UGB, is there a way to speed up the process?
Well, on the counties, and I sped it up to the greatest extent I could, and that we could have gotten here within about six weeks, which sounds like a long time, but there's some process to go through in getting it scheduled and everything, and then adoption two or three weeks after that. It's pretty much the shortest we can do. Just to add it to the UGB in the big picture, the state laws still regulate that process, and they're pretty heavy duty to get through it. Luckily, the city had already done a housing needs analysis that said, "For this year, we need so much land into the city for residential housing." And the applicant's representative was able to update that for the, for 2038, and incorporate new population, and still come up with a need for an amount of land. And this meets a portion of that amount of land. If the city hadn't done that housing needs analysis, which is a situation in quite a few cities, depending on how out of date they are when they've done them, then the process is, could be very long and very expensive for that applicant, because that housing needs is a really intensive effort the city goes through.
And, and the Council of Governments does some of that work for some of these small cities, is that right?
Cities contract with them to be their planner. And also, the Council of Governments will look for different grant opportunities from, sometimes from DLCD, the state, to do that kind of research for the cities and provide those, and update those documents.
And we provide some financial support for that purpose, don't we?
Uh, we, we have a contract with the COG. Most cities have a contract with the COG, but, yeah, we don't use, use them that much, but-
Not for planning.
Right. But we, we help-
But our support for the COG helps, helps provide those resources, right? Okay. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Brandon? If not, take a motion to close the public hearing in, whose turn is it? Calm?
It's my turn.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the City of Jervis Urban Growth Boundary Amendment.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that's done. Camara, I see you out there. Do, I don't have you on, okay. All right. Wow, we have an audience. Okay. That doesn't happen very often, does it?
We should sell tickets if it's like-
Then maybe we have nobody show up, yeah.
You're welcome here. You can come anytime you like.
I saw you out there, and I'm going, did I miss something on the agenda that we had for you? So, that concludes our business for the day. And Commissioner, if you want to read the calendar-
Yes, sir.
Uh, and we'll start signing forms someplace.
I think I have them here. Sorry.
Oh.
Today is Wednesday, March 20th. And we are in board session in the Senator Hearing Room on the first floor of 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. At 11:30 this morning, we're going to be at the Woodburn Chamber Commerce Forum Lunch, located at the Metropolitan Event Venue at 347 North Front Street in Woodburn. Tomorrow, Thursday, March 21st, at 1 o'clock, we will be testifying at the Senate Committee on Environment and Natural Resources, the Oregon State Capitol, Hearing Room C, 900 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Tomorrow-
That'll be fun.
-March 21st, at 2:00 in the afternoon, there's a Board of Commissioners, Chief Administrative Officer meeting, an executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.660. It'll be located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building, 555 Court Street Northeast, here in Salem. On Monday, March 25th, at 8:30 in the morning, we have calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On March 25th, Monday, at 9:00 in the morning, we have Management Updated, located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. Still on Monday, March 25th, at 11:00 in the morning, we have a Board of Commissioners, Chief Administrative Officer meeting with an executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.660, located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On March 25th, at 3:00 in the afternoon, that's mine, we have a Special Service Districts meeting, located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On Tuesday, March 26th, at 8:30 in the morning, we have a Community Corrections Board meeting, located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On Wednesday, March 27th, at 9:00 in the morning, we have board session here in this room. On Wednesday, March 27th, we have, at 2:00, we have a meeting with Representative Teresa Alonso Leon, located at the State Capitol, Room H 283, 900 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And on Wednesday, March 27th, at 3:00 in the afternoon, we have an executive session for MCLEA Bargaining pursuant to ORS 192.660, located on the fifth floor of this building in the Silverton Conference Room.
Okay. Well, that was a interesting discussion there at the end, and appreciate the, the extra time we took to something simple that we could have approved really easy. But it's just a, it's just a great example of why things get so expensive and we can't afford houses and, and, never mind.
I didn't really bring it up, but I can see other jogs in Jervis. You wonder why. Why doesn't that line continue down? I'm just telling you.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, changing subjects, though, if I could. We had our first town hall yesterday in Mont Angel. I was pretty happy with it. Had a group there, kind of the same people we've seen before, but got to visit with them, find out. And then we'll be in Woodburn here in just a little bit, hour and a half or so. And that, I hope we get a pretty good turnout with their chamber there. But what I wanted to talk about just a little bit, I enjoy going and try to, have gone to many of them, like, community first citizens events, and I attended one in Mont Angel, I think it was Monday night. And just, it just, I just think I'd match Mount Angel up against anybody for, for what they do in a community, a small group that gets, St. Paul, I guess certainly does do with the rodeo. But they honored, for example, the Oktoberfest. They found out it had never been mentioned before and all, you know, that's all volunteer and-
Right.
Uh, they've given some $3 million back to the local community and, and provide an avenue for so many different groups to, to raise funds that get them through the year and all their good works. And then they mentioned the fire department. That's already a wonderful group of guys there that, I should say, people in today's world, that really matter in that community. But then the one, and I've known him for some time, but they honored the mayor, Andy Ott, as a first citizen. And it really struck me of, I mean, here's a fellow, he's been on the fire department for some 20 years. He coaches youth, like, middle school teams, three different sports. And he's done that for years and years and years. And you can see, I don't know if you follow like- for years and years and years, and you can see, I don't know if you follow like I do, but Kennedy sports are on a, on a big rise. A state championship in football should have had girls basketball, and you can kind of trace it right back to people like Andy's, and, and of course, in being a longtime mayor too, so. I think, I think works like that need to be known in a wider, that's why I bring it up today, wider than just the community, but there's good people doing good things in this county. That's my point.
I like how much ownership people take of their community in places like Mount Angel, and some of these other places, where they don't wait for the government to do something for them. They've been doing it for, you know, their whole lives, you know, doing, doing Oktoberfest or doing the sports teams, or whatever it is, and it's really fun to get to go and, and see all the great things that they've accomplished, sort of on their own, with their own community, and I just like that ethic that they have out there.
Even your own state, and when they need a new, it's some years now, but they need a new cafeteria, you don't put a bond out, they just build it.
That's right.
Covered bridge, it burns down, they build it again, you know? So those are the type of people who are out there in our communities.
Bridge? You say Burner Bridge?
The Covered Bridge, do you know that story even?
In...
They moved it in from, like, someplace in the county, I don't...
And then it burned down.
And then it burnt, and they just rebuilt it, yeah, within about a year. It was amazing. And it's, it's a landmark, quite a structure. You, you need to, you like to walk and hike, I hear you do it in California. Why don't you take a little look around state in some time?
Speaking of, speaking of California, you know, I was in this city last Saturday that I, I, I thought of you.
Oh.
In the city, in California?
It's, it's a city called Norco, and there, there, you know how you have the buttons you push to walk across the crosswalk?
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, on the pole, no, no, no.
I thought that made you go in there.
No, 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 theirs are up here, theirs are up here, because it's, people ride horses.
Oh, I see.
Right? So the, the things are way up here, so you can, when you're on your horse. And, and I got a tour of the city. I don't know how they're doing it, because they, they must just be thumbing their noses at the feds, because their sidewalks are sand. You could not put a wheelchair down these sidewalks.
Well, that's not good. Okay, go ahead.
Right, based on what we just did today, and I, I went, I go, how do they get away with this? They, 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 they've just kept the city incorporated, it's an incorporated city, they've kept the city horse-friendly, and it's in between, it's, it's out there like Riverside, you know, it's in between these developed, you know, cities with sidewalks all around and everything else, and, and it's, it reminds me of something over in eastern Oregon. How do they get away, how do they do that?
My question is, do they have a very particular solid waste problem there, if it's horse-friendly? What do they do to manage that?
Oh. I didn't notice any of that, but I'm pretty good at that, because I've done the Silverton, what's that parade they do over there, the...
Homer Davenport.
Homer Davenport Parade with Representative Gilliam used to take me over there, and I did it last year, obviously without him, but with Representative Lewis. And that's what we do, we go through the parade the first time and throw candy and wave and all that, and then we come back and we do the pooper-scooper.
There you go.
With the truck with shovels.
That's an important public service.
But, but if you, but in Norco, they would just, it would go onto the sandy sidewalks.
It's called Horstown USA.
Exactly. You just Googled it, and they may have some pictures of it, and I, I just, I, I just kept driving around going, how can they do this? It kind of reminds me of Sublimity, you guys just saying, no, we're going to have minimum lot size of, what, ten thousand foot or whatever. They just said, no, we're not, we're not doing it.
We're losing that, but it's been thirty years.
Yeah.
Good run.
I, I'm wondering how many lawsuits they've had, that they've just said, come on, bring them on, we're going to defend them.
You know, they do have hitching rings in the sidewalks at Saint Paul. I try to tie my Tahoe up every time I pull in.
So, and I'm thinking of Saint, I'm thinking of Saint Paul, right? I mean, Saint Paul, and the, the, I didn't go to the bar, but the, Bickie pointed out to, she goes, now that's the, you know, local watering hole, it's just a dive, and she goes, and there's hitching posts out front. People tie their, put their horses up and go in and have adult beverage. Wow, that was amazing. Horstown USA.
Horstown USA.
Norco. Yeah. I did enjoy a really nice concert there that day.
All right, end this, so we can head towards Woodburn.
Okay, we will adjourn, oh, well, I guess...